Okay, I would like to call to order the city council meeting for the city of city council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for July 27, 2020. We will see the American flag in a moment. If you would please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Would the clerk please call the role of the members? Janice Hoppe.
Present.
Judy Hudson.
Present.
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Corey Stites.
Present.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
Valerie Nosler Beck. Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum. Thank you. Councillors, you have in your packets the minutes for the city council meeting for July 13, 2020. If I hear no objections, we will let the minute stand as presented. We will let the members, the minute stand as presented. Without objection, we will move through the approval. If there are any objections, no objections, we will go through the agenda as presented. We are now at our citizens' right to speak. And citizens may speak on any matter not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes. The mayor pro tem will be the timekeeper. Citizens who wish to speak on a public hearing item or decision, resolution, or motion may speak when that item comes up on the agenda at the conclusion of the staff report for that specific agenda item. You may use your raise your hand feature in the Zoom format. We will also query, I don't believe we have anyone in council chambers tonight, but that's, it's possible to go to council chambers for public comment. And we will use the raise your hand feature in the Zoom format. And we will ask for anyone on the phone if, if you wish to speak during citizens' right to speak. The public microphones have been unmuted at this time. If you are not speaking, please mute your telephone to decrease background noise. And now we will begin our citizens' right to speak. And Ms. Scheck is going to help us with, with introductions on the, on the speakers. Ms. Scheck, do we have anyone in city council chambers or on the raise your hand function? Who would like to speak tonight?
There, we don't have anyone in chambers tonight, but we do have Ms. Zariana Morozovich with her hand up in Zoom.
Okay, Ms. Morozovich, please introduce yourself and you may give us your, your name and spell your last name and give us your address and then you may continue.
Thank you. Zariana Morozovich, 3651 Ward Road. Morozovich is spelled M-O-R-O-Z-E-W-Y-C-H.
Please continue.
Thank you. So this is a statement posted by a council member this past week. I am all for citizens using their right to petition and referendum. However, what this flyer doesn't tell you is that a planned residential development or PRD gives the city more control over what can or cannot be done on that property. And any major changes have come, have to come back before city council. Also, this doesn't tell you that if they get enough signatures, this question won't be on the ballot in November, but will force a special election and will cost the city and taxpayers possibly hundreds of thousands of dollars. It is actually really telling that the only real argument against this development is that a completely separate development in a completely separate part of the city was on the ballot last year. Also, it should be pointed out that while we know how people voted, we really have no, excuse me, we have no real idea why they voted, how they voted. Actually, this, the statement is not correct. Standard zone districts protect neighborhoods by specifying requirements such as minimum setbacks, minimum lot sizes, maximum building coverage, et cetera. A PRD can be used to make requirements more stringent and to exert greater control. However, this is not what city council did in this rezoning. As approved, the PRD was used to circumvent these protections. On a property where three R1 houses could be built, the council is allowing a developer to squeeze in 10 units. The rezoning the city council approved gives this developer the right to build units with tiny lots, zero setback from an alley, only six feet between buildings and no backyards. The city council now has no control over this rezoning because they gave it away to the developer. How would you like it if that was, were built next door or down the street in your R1 neighborhood? In addition, you should know that a referendum does not force an election. If the petition is successful, it will be the city council's choice whether to repeal the zoning or to put it to the people, to the vote of the people. It was city council's choice to hear the case now rather than wait until the COVID crisis was under control. It will be city council's choice whether to call a special election. And please explain where you came up with this referendum costing hundreds of thousands of dollars. During the city council study session last Monday, the figure mentioned in response to your question was $60,000. If you listened to what the Wheat Ridge citizens will overwhelmingly rate opposed to rezoning, this cost would be zero. Thank you.
Thank you. I would also like to, to let everyone know that this is the first opportunity that we've had to have public input on the budget. And this is the appropriate time to have that input if you would like. Ms. Scheck, do we have additional speakers for citizens' right to speak?
We do, Mayor. We have Ihor Figlous with Jerry DeTulio on deck.
Thank you. Mr. Figlous, please introduce yourself and give us your address and you may continue.
Good evening. I'm Ihor Figlous, F-I-G-L-U-S, and I live at 9775 West 36th Avenue. And I think the city council should reconsider the rezoning of 9800 West 38th for several reasons. They are, number one, erroneous and incomplete information regarding regulations provided during the public hearing. Two, erroneous comparisons were made to existing subdivisions in the area. Three, erroneous statements were made that there is neighborhood consensus on allowing 10 units to be built. And four, overwhelming neighborhood opposition to the rezoning from R1 to higher density. Regarding number one, erroneous and incomplete information. This will be a problem when a subdivision of a property is attempted. When it comes time to subdivide the property, it will not be possible to do so and remain conformity with code. Units as envisioned by the ODP cannot be built. Because according to section 26 dash 401 of subdivision regulations, no final plat of subdivision shall be approved by staff, planning commission, or city council unless it conforms with the provisions of these regulations. And the regulations state that private streets are not allowed. And that buildings have to have frontage on public streets. Regarding number two, erroneous comparisons to existing subdivisions in the area. It was stated subdivision to the east of the Hardy property is approximately 2,000 square feet larger. That's not correct. The Meadowhaven subdivision, as Iris Court is normally, is formally called, is 18,300 square feet larger or almost half an acre. Resulting actual difference in density is significant. Based on lot size, the Meadowhaven subdivision density is 7.5 units per acre and the Hardy property is 11.4 units per acre. In addition, it was never noted the subdivision to the east has a proper street, setbacks, side yards, and backyards. The Hardy subdivision is not at all comparable. It should also be noted that this information comparing Meadowhaven subdivision was not presented during the public hearing. And yet it was cited as the basis of the decision by two council persons during discussion prior to the vote and by a third council person and post on social media afterwards. Using information not presented during the public hearing is improper and should be grounds for reconsideration. Number three, erroneous opinion that there's an able consensus. There was never a statement of consensus by the neighbors that 10 units were acceptable. More than 100 people signed a letter opposing the previous rezoning application, but there was nothing there about agreeing with 10 units. This entire discussion is also not presented into evidence at the public hearing and there was no opportunity for verification. And this should never have been used as an argument in favor of the Hardy proposal. The overwhelming neighborhood, number four, overwhelming neighborhood opposition to the rezoning. Statements by neighborhood residents were nearly unanimous on this. Statements in favor of the rezoning were overwhelmingly from people who did not live in the area and the majority do not even live in Wheat Ridge. People from all over Wheat Ridge voiced their opposition to the rezoning, not just to the density, but also to the many inadequacies of the plan.
Thank you, Mr. Figlous. Your, your time has expired.
None of these were addressed unless you count the statement by a council person to the effect that we have been lied to before by developers, but let's hope that somehow this developer will build something better.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. DeTulio.
Good evening, city council. This is Jerry DeTulio, addresses Wheat Ridge. So I've had the interesting pleasure of listening to the same 10 people for the last 18 months criticize the city and the city council. The current complaint is with planned residential developments or PRD. I can tell you that when I was on city council as mayor, we highly encouraged new development, this type of rezoning to give neighborhoods and the city more control over what was being built. City. In 1983, and I voted for this, voters approved the heightened density limitations in the city charter. The density, the density set by the voters in 1983 with 21 units per acre is still there. Currently, all of the zoning districts, including the PRD, follow the charter guideline of 21 units per acre. The current proposed development at 38th and Johnson also follows the city charter with regard to density and height. Density is a subjective term. When someone said that a project is too bad, I think this is really the same. It's approved by the voters in 1983. It's time to quit leading the public about density, especially a personal view of density. And like I said, I, in 1983, I did vote for the heightened density limitations. The only areas in the city of Wheat Ridge that allow a higher density than 21 units per acre are the areas that were exempted by the voters in 2009 or 2010 and the urban renewal areas. And we see those developments at 38th and Wadsworth, Lucky Site, for example. In the past 25 years, I've had the opportunity to sponsor and support many ballot questions in the city of Wheat Ridge. Many passed and a few failed. Pass or fail, what I have not done, and I hope others don't do, become the anointed spokesperson on a pass or fail ballot question. I have not spoken at city council, acting like I represent the entire population of the city. As was mentioned last week by council member, every proposed development must pass or fail city council on its own merits. It would be unethical, borderline illegal for city council to judge all proposed developments based on ballot question on Upland Street. The vote on Upland Street was about the proposed density, not PRDs. I thank the city council for looking at the facts and their recent decisions on proposed developments. To city council and to others, thank you for the city charter on height and density. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Scheck, do we have additional speakers under our citizens' right to speak?
Mayor, we don't have anyone with their hand up. We do have a caller that just joined, so I'm not sure if they'd also like to speak.
Okay, if there is anyone on the telephone who would like to speak, please.
I would like to speak, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, please, please introduce yourself, give us your name and address, spell your last name, and you may continue after that.
My name is Odarka Figlous. That's F as in Frank, I-G-L-U-S as in Sam. I live at 10580 West 34th Avenue in Wheat Ridge. And it's interesting to hear Mr. DeTulio's comments. And as you, many of you probably know that I've been a longtime supporter of Mr. DeTulio. I voted for him in his campaign for city, I mean for county treasure and I donated to his campaign. However, we have to disagree here. We were both on city council when this whole issue of PRDs came up and as was Claudia Worth. And if you listened last time, you probably heard Claudia's pretty eloquent statement about that. I remember distinctly having some questions about the planned residential development. And I was assured by you, Mr. DeTulio, that this would never be used to circumvent the underlying zoning and the protections of that zoning. This was supposed to be used not to increase density, but to allow for more creative uses with, of that underlying zoning, in this case, the R1 zoning, to maybe create a more unique development. But it was not supposed to be used to increase density. And I distinctly remember that comment that you made on the dais about this. These PRDs are being misused to increase density in neighborhoods. That's not what this is all about, not what it should be about. And then I have to say the other statement is that, you know, people have the right to referendum. That's our constitutional right. It's not something that a few people made up in Wheat Ridge. That's our constitutional right. It's in Schridenite Constitution. Elected officials take an oath first and foremost to support the Constitution. And I think it's really time for elected officials to stop using their bully pulpit to disparage citizens who are exercising their constitutional rights, especially in these very trying circumstances. You know, it's not just 10 people. 20, 2,000 people signed the petition last time for referendum. Six, more than 6,000 people voted. We're getting a really good response now to the people that call and that want to sign the petition. So please don't keep saying it's just 10 people. And don't forget that you've made it difficult for other people to participate. Not everybody can participate in this kind of forum. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Scheck, are there any additional speakers for citizens' right to speak?
Mayor, none that have indicated that they would like.
I will make, there are no hands raised in the Zoom format? Okay, I will make a call one more time. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak under citizens' right to speak? You may do so now. Please unmute your device and ask to speak. Okay, I don't hear anyone. We will close our citizens' right to speak portion of the meeting and move to agenda item number one. Ms. Nosler Beck, would you please introduce this item?
Yep, I'll take myself off mute and then I will introduce this item. All right, council bill number 12 dash 2020, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 11,700 West 46th Avenue from Agricultural 1A-1 to Residential 2R-2, case number WZ-20-04/11,700W.46th Ave. At issue, the applicant is requesting approval of a zone change from Agricultural 1 to Residential 2 for property located at 11,700 West 46th Avenue. The zone change will result in a zoning that matches surrounding zoning designations. It will also address the site's existing nonconforming conditions such that the existing duplex will go from a legal nonconforming use to a legal and conforming use that complies with the zoning.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. It is an ordinance on second reading. It is quasi judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. And if you, I'm going to administer an oath now. If you, by speaking at this public hearing, you affirm that you will tell the truth as you understand it. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff report on this issue?
We do. Zareen Tazneem, our planner from Community Development Department, will present on this, this evening.
Very good. Ms. Tazneem, please continue.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to share my screen now and play the presentations. Hello, my name is Zareen Tazneem and I'm a planner with the city of Wheat Ridge's Community Development Department. I am presenting case number WZ2004, which is a request for approval of a zone change from Agricultural 1A1 to Residential 2R2 at 11700 West 46th Avenue. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. The property is within the city of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met and therefore, city council has jurisdiction to hear this case. This slide shows a 2018 aerial where the property is outlined in red. The site measures 14,025 square feet, which is about one-third of an acre. It currently contains a duplex that, according to the Jefferson County Assessor, was built in 1968. It's located a block north of the 44th Avenue corridor and a block east of Tabor Street. Immediately to the south of property is land that is entitled for the Clear Creek Terrace Townhome Development Project. To the northeast and immediate west are primarily low-density residential uses, while further to the west and south are more heavily commercial uses on Tabor. I-70 is located in the northwest. The site is currently zoned A1 and surrounded by residential R2 zoning to the northwest and southwest, which primarily contains duplexes. Properties in the area zoned planned commercial development, mixed-use neighborhood, and Commercial 1 contain commercial uses. While properties zoned R3 and planned residential development contain multifamily uses with three or more units. This is a view of the subject property looking south, which shows the existing duplex. This is a view of the property looking south at the eastern side yard where the applicant would like to build an addition if approved for the zone change. Please note, the duplex is currently being remodeled under an active building permit. Thus, materials are being stored in this area temporarily. The duplex on this lot is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, but is not compatible with the underlying zoning. The property is nonconforming in terms of lot size, coverage, setbacks, and use. This could be remedied by rezoning to R2 to match the surrounding neighborhood. This would also then allow the owner to construct customary accessory structures or additions. This is illustrated in this table, which compares existing conditions to the A1 and R2's zone districts. The development standards are the same in A1 and R2 in terms of building height. Then in all other categories, they differ. And you can see the R2 district is far more compatible with existing conditions on the site. In terms of permitted uses, R2 allows duplexes, whereas the A1 zone district does not. Lots on the A1 zone district are also required to have a minimum lot area of one acre, while duplex lots under R2 are only required to be minimum of 12,500 square feet. Because the A1 zone district is intended for single-family residential estate living, the setback in maximum lot coverage requirements are also more restrictive than that of R2. The site is not a whole acre, but still subject to the lot coverage restrictions, so the owner is unable to invest in the property. As the requirement of the zone change process, a neighborhood meeting was held on April 29, 2020 in a virtual Zoom meeting setting due to COVID-19 regulations. One person attended the meeting and the notes from the meeting are included in the planning commission staff report. Then Sweet Ridge is not a full-service city. We sent the application on referral to outside agencies, as well as completed an internal review. We did not receive concerns or objections from outside agencies. Planning commission recommended approval at a public hearing on July 17. Before the hearing, the property was posted for 15 days and letters were sent to property owners within a 300-foot radius. Comments collected on Wheat Ridge Speaks will be reviewed by city council members and entered into the public record. We use several criteria to evaluate zone change requests, which includes consistency with the comprehensive plan. Staff believes that the proposed R2 zoning is consistent with the policies and goals in the city comprehensive plan, specifically the ones outlined for areas designated as neighborhoods. The city goals that are met with the rezoning proposal include encouraging reinvestment in a property, applicant plans to build an addition if the zoning is approved, maintaining consistent character, the property will remain a duplex, consistent in character to other duplexes that surround it, and consistent maintenance. The applicant is also remodeling the existing duplex. Ultimately, staff is recommending approval of the request. The proposed zone change will promote the health, safety, and welfare of the community and does not result in an adverse effect on the surrounding area. Utility infrastructure adequately services the property. The proposed zone change is consistent with the goals and objectives of the city's comprehensive plan. The zone change will provide additional opportunity for reinvestment in the area. The criteria used to evaluate a zone change supports the request. And the R2 zoning will bring the existing duplex into compliance with the zone district in which it is located. Planning commission has also recommended approval to city council. If city council approves the request, then the zone change is approved. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, do you have any further presentation on this?
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. This is Ken. We do have an applicant presentation as well that I think Zareen will share as well.
Thank you.
Yes.
Hello, my name is Mary Ann Fake and I own a duplex at 11700 and 11710 West 46th Avenue in Wheat Ridge. I grew up in southwestern Colorado and went to school at the University of Colorado, where I graduated with a degree in accounting. After working briefly in Boulder, I moved to the San Francisco Bay Area, where I lived for more than 40 years, working as a CPA and for various banks and other companies. My current employer opened an office in Denver in 2018 and last summer they asked me to move to take up a senior finance job downtown. I purchased the duplex in Wheat Ridge with the intention of living on one side with my older daughter and having my younger daughter and her fiance live on the other side. There were a number of improvements I wanted to make to the property. So when I moved, I started living with my daughter and her fiance while the work on my side of the duplex was being completed. so when I moved, I started living with my daughter and her fiance while the work on my side of the duplex was being completed. Most of the work I'm having done is interior to the building, including adding an extra bedroom and changing the layout. After discussing plans with an architect and contractor, I would also like to expand the building on one side to add a new two-car garage and a sunroom. This will enable the two existing garages to be used by my daughter and her fiance so they can park inside in the winter. Because the land is currently zoned agricultural, A one, expansion of the actual size of the building is not allowed. Therefore, I am asking to have the property rezoned to residential, R two, to allow the addition of the garage and sunroom. I believe that the changes I am making are planning to make are consistent with the current neighborhood. It's a residential neighborhood, and I believe my property is the only one still zoned agricultural. I have no plans to add an additional living space or make any changes that would increase traffic or block views or any any other negative implications. I hope to be a good neighbor and believe that my improvements to the property will make it more attractive and improve the neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mary Ann Fake, and I own a duplex at one one seven zero zero and one one seven one zero West Forty-
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I think we're ready.
Does that conclude the staff and the applicant presentation? Good. Thank you. Thank you very much. Before we go to questions of council, I will open this up to the public's right to speak on this matter. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on agenda item number one? Ms. Shek, do we have anyone with their hands raised in the Zoom format or anyone in council chambers? Or if I have anyone on the telephone who would like to speak from the public on this matter, please speak up, and I will recognize you.
No one has their hand up at this point, Mayor?
Okay, I don't hear anyone from the public speaking on this item, so I will go to council. Are there questions of council? If you'll please raise your hand, I will call on you. Ms. Hoppy.
I need to clarify, this rezoning to R two will bring the non-conforming, although allowed, non-conforming use into a now conforming use. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes.
Okay, are there additional questions from council? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Ms. Nos, Rebecca, may I have a motion on this?
I move to approve Council Bill number twelve dash twenty twenty and ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at eleven thousand seven hundred West Forty-Sixth Avenue from agricultural one, A one, to residential two, R two, on second reading, and that it takes effect fifteen days after the final publication for the following reasons. One, the Planning Commission has recommended approval of this rezoning after conducting a proper public hearing. The proposed, two, the proposed rezoning has been reviewed by the Community Development Department, which has forwarded its recommendation of approval. And three, the proposed rezoning has been found to comply with the criteria for review in section twenty-six dash six oh three of the Code of Laws.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second by Mr. Urban. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will a clerk please poll the council? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand in the screen, and the clerk will count the votes.
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously, seven to none.
Thank you very much. We will go to agenda item number two. Ms. Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill number thirteen dash twenty twenty and ordinance amending chapter twenty-six of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws pertaining to the form and timing of cash and lieu payment for parkland dedication requirement, case number Z O A twenty dash O three. At issue, the subdivision ordinance requires cash and lieu payment for parkland dedication requirements to be made in the form of a certified check and at the time a plat is recorded for new subdivisions. Staff has found that payment in the form of a certified check is not necessary, and that payment at time of building permit is more appropriate.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. It is an ordinance on second reading. It is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing, and Mr. Goff, do we have a staff report on this item?
John Mew.
Thank you. Stephanie Stevens, the senior planner in the Community Development Department. Is that correct, Ken?
Okay, Ms. Stevens.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Stephanie, planner in Community Development. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. I also wanted to note that we did not receive any public comment on this case, which I forgot to add to the presentation today, but I'll go ahead and play.
Okay.
All right. Good evening, members of City Council. My name is Stephanie Stevens, and I'm a planner with the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. I'm presenting case number Z O A twenty amendment related to the form and timing of cash and lieu payment for parkland dedication requirements. Having implemented the parkland dedication requirements for over five years now, staff has reviewed the fee structure and procedure and is recommending minor updates related to the form and timing of cash and lieu payment. This code amendment is a follow-up to a session held with you all on June first to discuss these issues. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and therefore, City Council has jurisdiction to hear this case. In two thousand and fourteen, City Council adopted an ordinance and supporting resolution which revised the city's subdivision regulations to set forth consistent and defensible parkland dedication requirements and to establish fees and lieu. The intent of the subdivision code rewrite in two thousand and fourteen was in large part to align the city code with the reality that Wheat Ridge is a largely built-out community focused on redevelopment and infill projects. The subdivision regulations are intended to be streamlined, well-organized, predictable, consistent, and equitable. In doing the research that resulted in the ordinance and resolution that were adopted in two thousand and fourteen, one area of focus was on staff's approach to determining parkland dedications and associated fees and lieu, as well as the form and timing of payment. Most often, a fee is paid in lieu of land dedication rather than the physical dedication of a park on-site. The process has been working well and is reasonable and predictable. However, the timing of fee payment for new subdivisions does not always align with the time of construction and has been somewhat difficult to track. For example, if the fee is paid at plot recording, when they come in for a building permit, you have to check the subdivision records to make sure the fees are paid, in case there's a major time lapse between the two. Subdivisions are oftentimes established far before development occurs, and these may not be reflective of the current market at time of development. In addition, requiring payment in the form of a certified check is found to be outdated practice. The slide shown on the screen shows the current language found in City Code section twenty-six, four fourteen, A four E, and it currently reads as follows. Form and timing of cash and lieu payment. Cash and lieu payments shall be paid to the city by certified check and deposited in the city account to be used solely for the acquisition, development, or improvement of parks, open spaces, bicycle and pedestrian trails, and related facilities. For subdivisions, payment shall be made at time the plat is recorded. For development, payment shall be made prior to the building permit issuance. As mentioned earlier, this code amendment is a follow-up to a study session that was held with the City Council on June first, where council gave staff direction to proceed with an amendment. This slide shows the proposed language recommended by staff and illustrates the proposed changes with text striped to be removed and added text in bold. Section twenty-six, four fourteen, A four E would be edited to read as follows. Form and timing of cash and lieu payment. Cash and lieu payments shall be paid to the city and deposited in the city account to be used solely for the acquisition, development, or improvement of parks, open spaces, bicycle, pedestrian trails, and related facilities. For development and subdivisions, payment shall be made prior to building permit issuance. Staff has found that subdivisions are oftentimes established far before development occurs, and it is better correlated at time of building permit. Thus, staff is recommending approval to amend the subdivision regulations to require cash and lieu payment to be made prior to building permit issuance for all development, including new subdivisions. As you may recall, we discussed the form and timing of cash and lieu payment at a study session on June first, where we mostly discussed the timing issue. Staff has added the recommended edits related to form by certified check. The code currently requires the cash and lieu payment for park fees in the form of a certified check, which creates an unnecessary step for applicants and does not always reflect current practice. This is not a code requirement for any other fee in the Community Development Department, because park fees will now likely be paid in much smaller increments and with building permit fees. And because building permit fees are not paid by certified check, this code amendment also removes the requirement for that certified check. Staff has the ability to use discretion and require a certified check for substantial fees when necessary, without this being a codified requirement. In terms of process, as I mentioned, this was discussed in a City Council study session on June first, and staff has proceeded as directed. Because the amendment affects the zoning code, the Planning Commission has jurisdiction as well, and they reviewed proposal at a public hearing on July second. There was no public comment during or in advance of that hearing, and the Commission recommended approval by a vote of seven to zero. On July twenty-seventh, the City Council will make the ultimate decision on this ordinance at the public hearing. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance. This concludes my staff presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Mr. Goff, does that conclude your staff presentation?
It does.
Thank you so much. Before we go to questions of for council, I will open this up to questions or to comments from the public. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak on this? This is your opportunity. Ms. Shek, do we have anyone with their hand up in Zoom format?
We do not, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there anyone on the telephone who would like to comment on this item? You may do so now. Speak up. Okay, I don't see anyone from the public wishing to speak on this, so we will go to questions from council. If you have a question, please raise your hand, and I will call on you. I don't see any questions from council. Ms. Stevens, I had one question. When you, if it was a subdivision that had multiple multiple buildings on it, so you'd be getting multiple building permits, would all of the fees be paid with the payment of the building permit for the first structure? Or would it be prorated on?
No. So the way it would work is they would pay per unit. So as they come in with each individual building permit, if it's a larger subdivision, we usually do see kind of a master building permit and then individual building permits. So in that case, you'd likely see the payment all at once, and that we would then still require the certified check. But otherwise, you'll be seeing them in smaller increments, like I mentioned, instead of all at once with the, as you would with the subdivision.
Okay. Do you foresee a situation where on a multiple-building program that took a long time to construct, that there may not be the funds available to make the park improvements? Or is that more of a theoretical, you know, until the last unit's built out, you don't have all of the money to pay for the park? So does that create any real concern?
I don't think so. And as I stated before, I think with those master building permits, we would see a large chunk sum if they wanted to just develop them all kind of at the same time. So I don't imagine it being a large concern in that regard. Yeah, I think.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions from council? Okay, we will, motion is in order. Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you. I move to recommend approval of the proposed ordinance amending chapter twenty-six of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws pertaining to the form and timing of cash and lieu payment for parkland dedication requirements.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a second. Who is the second? Is that Mr. Urban?
Stites.
No. Oh, Mr. Stites, thank you. Okay, is there discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, we will go to a vote. Will all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand? Will a clerk please record the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously, seven to none.
Thank you very much. We will now go to agenda item number three. Ms. Weaver, would you please introduce this item?
Be happy to. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Council Bill number fourteen twenty twenty and ordinance amending chapter twenty-six of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning notice requirements for continued and postponed public hearings. This is case number Z O A dash twenty dash O four. At issue are the requirements for noticing of public hearings. They are provided in the City Charter and chapter twenty-six of the Code of Laws. This includes notice by sign and letter, as well as publication in the newspaper and on the city's website. Sometimes a public hearing is continued or postponed, and this code amendment provides procedural clarity on the notice requirements for those situations.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, an ordinance on second reading. It is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing, and Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We, yes, we do. Our city attorney, Mr. Dahl.
Mr. Dahl, thank you very much.
And I'll ask Ken Johnston to add anything when I'm done and to help with questions. I appreciate the council's attention to this, and let me begin by saying there are really six different ways that you can learn that there's a public hearing on a land use case in the city. As mentioned in the description of the issue, you get a sign that's posted on the property, a letter notice to property owners within three hundred feet. There's a newspaper publication. It's posted on the city's website, and as well as you see in the council action form, it's listed on the city's online calendar for those that follow the calendar, and a lot of people do, and on the Wheat Ridge Speaks site. And as council has been saying, Wheat Ridge Speaks is now being actively used by residents. So those are the six different ways that a public hearing on a land use matter is made available to citizens. Obviously, it's the first four that are required by code, the online calendar and Wheat Ridge Speaks' code requirement. And what we're looking at tonight are the code requirements. Let me just say that for most of the time, a postponed hearing, as is mentioned in the materials, is postponed to the next council meeting. Continued hearings, where you don't either take any testimony, you open it, don't take any testimony, we'll talk about that, and then about protest, or it's open and it's not completed, are typically continued to the next regular meeting. And the rule in continued meetings throughout the state is that you've given notice already of the first hearing. People come to that hearing, or people log in, and they are then able to know that the hearing's been continued to a specific date, time, and place, because that's the motion. So the law is in the state. There's no right or obligation for the city to provide notice of continued public hearings. Postponed hearings, same thing. Now, I will say a tradition in the city, and we're going to memorialize that tradition here by this ordinance, is to give additional notice of a continued public hearing, no matter what kind of hearing that it is, or maybe the testimony just went long and it had to be continued to a date. This issue, though, came up as a result of the defined protest process that the council adopted back in September. And you'll recall that if a protest is filed for the, excuse me, after the first reading of the ordinance and before second reading, that automatically triggers a postponement, or excuse me, a continuance of that second reading public hearing until the next regular council meeting. Problem is, of course, you don't know that until after the notice has gone out. So on the night, it was originally scheduled, by virtue of the council's ordinance that you passed last September, hearing is opened, it's automatically continued to the next regular council meeting. That actually happened on the hardy rezoning that the council approved last time. That works only if you've got, and it requires your requirement for notice on protest-continued hearings, kind of a subset of continued hearings. Requires that it give notice in the same manner as for the original hearing. And as has been pointed out in the materials, that's impossible, especially for a newspaper publication, because you only have two weeks, and the newspaper publication requirement is fifteen days. So it's an impossibility. It happened, and it was able to be done on the hardy rezoning, because there was an extra Monday at the end of that month, and we really had three weeks to be able to achieve that fifteen-day. 15 day publication requirement of the additional notice required for the continued hearing triggered as a result of a protest. Not a garden variety continued hearing, where you get halfway through the testimony and just decide you need more time, but protest driven continued hearing. So in order to address that conflict, because it'll keep coming up potentially, we've put together three very short amendments to the, two to the notice provision in the code and one to the section on, on protests. And if you turn to that ordinance, I'll just point those, those out. First, the code section 26109 is a section in the code comprehensively establishes all the notice requirements for land use cases. It's in chapter 26, and so that's where those notice requirements are. It's all in section 26109. So there's two little amendments to that. Basically says for a postponed hearing, you have notice of a postponed hearing, something that isn't required now, but basically this is additional notice. You have notice of a postponed hearing in the same manner that you gave it to begin with, the original date, but the, it's not required to meet the time requirements, the reason I described, especially around newspaper. For continued hearings, again, you'll see at the bottom of the page, you have notice of a continued hearing in the same manner as the original, but again, the time requirements aren't, aren't to be met. Then a conforming change, if you turn the page, is, is to go over to the, the protest triggered continuance provision, and making clear that when that happens, hearing's open, but no testimony is taken, and notice is given in the same manner as for continued hearings up in 109. And we just fixed 109 to say that the time requirements don't have to be met. So that will resolve the internal conflict that is in the code and needs to get fixed. And I should say that it ends up granting additional notice, where it's not required now. It's not required for postponed hearings now generally, it's not required for continued hearings now generally. It's only required now for a continued hearing that's been triggered as a result of a protest. And of course, that's being maintained, but we're dealing with the time problem. So fixing a time problem and frankly extending additional notice requirements that would be available for all forms of postponed and continued hearings. Ken, did I, just any subtleties here?
I, I think certainly not, Jerry. I think that was an excellent summary of, of where, where we're headed with this ordinance. And I would just note for council and the public's benefit, that as a corollary matter, we'll be in front of you a week from this evening to talk about additional potential modifications to public noticing for quasi judicial land use applications at council's request and direction in relation to the distance for which parties are, are notified of pending quasi judicial land use applications, and the manner in which the properties are physically posted. So we look forward to that conversation as well a week from tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, does that conclude your report?
It does. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we go to questions from council, I will open this up to members of the public to speak on this. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak on this? Ms. Scheck, do we have anyone in council chambers or on the Zoom format who would like to speak on this item?
No, Mayor, I don't see any hands up.
Okay, and I will ask, once again, anyone on the telephone, if you would like to speak on this item, please unmute yourself and ask to speak. Okay, are, we don't have any members of the public desiring to speak on this. We'll close that portion. Now I want to open this up to questions from council. Are there any, before I close the public hearing, are there any questions of council of staff? And when to close the public hearing, and Ms. Weaver, please provide us a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve council bill number 142020, an ordinance amending chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning notice requirements for continued and postponed public hearings on second reading, and that it take effect immediately upon adoption.
Okay.
There's a motion and a second by Mr. Urban. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand in the screen, and the clerk will poll the council.
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will go to agenda item number four. Mr. Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council bill number 16 dash 2020, an ordinance approving the disposition of excess real property held by the city adjacent to Ridge Road between Taft and Tabor Streets. At issue, the city of Wheat Ridge owns a sliver of real property located on the north side of Ridge Road between Taft Court and Tabor Street. The real property, it essentially functions as additional right of way that has been deemed to be excessive and unnecessary by the community development and engineering division.
Thank you. Pardon me. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. Mr. Stites, please provide us a, a motion on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve council bill number 16 dash 2020, an ordinance approving the disposition of excess real property held by the city adjacent to Ridge Road between Taft and Tabor Streets. Order published, public hearing set for Monday, August 10th, 2020, at 7:00 PM as a virtual meeting, and take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Ms. Dozeman. Will the clerk please poll the council? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand.
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you so much. We will go to agenda item number five. Mr. Urban, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council bill number 15 dash 2020, an ordinance repealing chapter 16, article 10, massage parlors and reenacting regulation of massage businesses by admitting chapter, chapter 11 licenses, permits, and miscellaneous business regulations by the addition of a new article into, article 10 entitled massage businesses, and making conformity, conforming amendments to chapter 2, article 5 administrative enforcement, and chapter 26 zoning and development.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. May I please have a motion, Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve council bill number 15 dash 2020, an ordinance repealing chapter 16, chapter 16, article 10, massage parlors and reenacting regulation of massage businesses by admitting chapter 11 licenses, permits, and miscellaneous business regulations by the addition of a new article 10 entitled massage businesses making conforming amendments to chapter 2, article 5 administrative enforcement, and chapter 26 zoning and development on first reading, order published, a public hearing set for Monday, August 10th, 2020 at 7:00 PM as a virtual meeting, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Mr. Stites. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand, and will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will go to agenda item number six. Ms. Hoppy, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some motion to accept the 2019 financial statements from Clifton Larson Allen. At issue, section 10 dash 15 of the municipal charter, the city of Wheat Ridge requires an independent audit be performed annually for all city accounts. In addition, in 2019, the city received more than $750,000 in federal funds for Wadsworth Boulevard, which triggered a single audit of all federal funds. The CPA firm Clifton Larson Allen, CLA, performed both the city and the federal audits of the city's financial statements for the year ending December 31st, 2019. Once again, this year, the city received an unqualified opinion. A representative from CLA will be at the July 27th, 2020 city council meeting to present the 2019 financial statements to council for acceptance.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, do you have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. I'll turn it over to Ally Scheck, our administrative services director, and then we do have representative from CLA, and Mark Colvin, our finance manager. So Ally?
Thank you, city manager. Good evening, Mayor and council. Very briefly, it's my pleasure to introduce Allison Slife, who is a principal with Clifton Larson Allen, and it's our, our pleasure to work with her and this great firm on our audit. And again, Mark Colvin, our finance managers here. I just wanted to say how proud I am that we are delivering the audit to you on time, despite the pandemic. This was work that the team really prioritized and kept moving through this crazy last couple of months. So I'll turn it over to Allison. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much for the introduction, and great to, to be with you all. Thanks for the time this evening. So as Ally mentioned, I'll, I'll echo again the hard work that Mark and his team put forth, as well as our team, to get this done. You know, doing the audit completely remotely is something that we've never done before, and certainly had a lot of challenges. So I did want to just echo the comments that were already made and say thanks again for all the hard work to get us to this point. So I am going to cover a couple of the items within the agenda packet. So I have the PDF pages, if you want to follow along with your own packet. If not, I'll summarize the pages and, and kind of the content that I wanted to cover. So it's on page 115 out of 211 in your agenda packet, if you're following along. This is the annual financial report, so the financial statements for the city for the year ended December 31st, 2019. Really, the biggest page here that, that was already mentioned briefly is on page 122, and that is ultimately our independent auditors' report or audit opinion over the financial statements. And we're happy to report, as was mentioned, it was a clean audit opinion, unmodified is the terminology we use, which is the best opinion that the city can get. So congratulations again on achieving that again this year. Otherwise, I did want to just mention briefly other pieces of the financial statements. The management discussion and analysis, or M D N A, is a section within the financials that is written from city management's perspective, and is a good summary if you're looking for about a 10-page or so summary of the financial results of the city for the 2019 year compared to 2018 year. Would just mention to, to take a read through that section is it's a good high-level comparative year-over-year, gives management's perspective. We do review it for consistency, but it's not audited in terms of that section, because there's future-looking information in there. But just wanted to mention that is a good place to take a look if you don't want to read the full financial statements. Otherwise, financial details, I did want to kind of skip all the way to the end, the back pages of the financial statements, if you're following along. This year was unique compared to the prior year, because we did go through a single audit, as was mentioned, which basically means there was a certain level of federal funding that did rise to the level of having to test major federal programs this year. And so that was something that was new to the city. I think many years ago, that might have happened, but it's been a number of years since then. And the results of those were, were great results. At the very end of the financial statements, as I mentioned, there is a schedule, as I'm paging myself here, it's called the Schedule of Findings and Question Costs. And so if we were to have any sort of financial statement or findings over the federal program, which was the Highway Planning and Construction Program, it's money that comes through CDOT. We would have to report those results there, and we're happy to report, we did not have any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies related to the audit. And that's a big achievement, because a single audit is a very intensive audit process. There's a lot of things we have to look at, both financially and non-financially. There's even non-financial things we have to look at when we're testing compliance of the federal program. So again, we did want to give kudos to the city and all the staff there involved with that federal program specifically, as well as the financial statements. The next page I wanted to mention just briefly within the agenda packet is page 189. And this is what we call our management letter. It's basically a summary of any sort of best practice recommendations or kind of more minor items that we didn't have to report as part of the financial statement package, so not considered a material weakness or significant deficiency, but a lesser item. So again, more best practice recommendations or just kind of items of note. So within that page, we did have a couple different items. One of, one of them was related to the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, which again was new this year because of having to go through a federal program, a single audit. And there was one award that had not been originally included on there. It was a pretty small amount, about 84,000 in comparison to the rest of it. So it's just making sure that that is included going forward, and that was corrected by the city. So the amounts that are presented are, are correct. Otherwise, we did have some bank reconciliation items that were fairly minor in nature, really just related to timing as of the end of the year, and that was also corrected. We also had an item related to the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority, related to investment reconciliation process, so kind of just cleaning up some older activity. Again, that was corrected. And then the last item related to property tax receivable, and this is kind of a nuance with governmental accounting and how things are reported for both the city and the Urban Renewal Authority. And so that was corrected within the financial statements as well. But again, those aren't considered findings, they're more best practice comments. And then the last page within your agenda packet is page 191, if you're following along. We are directly engaged to perform the audit every year directly with members of city council and, and the mayor on your behalf. We, we conduct the audit on your behalf, and we're required to report those results to you. So there's basically a letter that just summarizes any sort of big items that we noted during the year, big changes year-over-year, and really reporting those results. So that's really what this letter summarizes. It's on a CLA letterhead, it's addressed to the mayor and city council, kind of midway down the page, it says significant audit findings, and goes on from there. So we would have to disclose any sort of big accounting policy changes or things that happened during the year. There weren't any, so that's nothing of note there. Accounting estimate-wise, there are some pretty big numbers within the financial statements that are, are estimates, and so we revisit those every year as part of the audit process to make sure that those are reasonable, that they make sense based on, you know, third-party information, or best practices, or kind of things that cities, city governments report. So those items, really the biggest one is the capital asset activities. So having to estimate how long things live for from a capital asset, property, plant, and equipment standpoint, is something that is a judgment call based on, you know, industry knowledge and just knowledge of those actual capital assets. So we do revisit that every year to make sure that that's reasonable. Otherwise, the other item is claims liabilities, claims payable incurred but not reported, is based on past experience of the city, as well as third-party actuarial information. So that is assessed every year. And then the last item is the estimate of the pollution, pollution remediation liability, again, based on third-party information and assessed every year. Otherwise, on the, the next page of that letter, we would, if we had any sort of difficulties in performing the audit, we'd have to report those, and we're happy to report, we did not. Quite to the contrary, it certainly was challenging, you know, on both sides, but we were, we were able to get to the end result and appreciated the help along the way. We did have some corrected misstatements, meaning amounts that we identified during the financial statement audit that were corrected by management. Those are noted within this letter, just for your reference. I mentioned most of those already when I was reading, reading off the other letter. No sort of disagreements with management in terms of how things should be reported or disclosed. Everything was pretty standard from there. And then the last attachment that's attached to the back of that letter is what we call the management representation letter, and that's a letter that we do get signed from city management, saying that they let us know about any litigation going on. They gave us supporting documentations that we requested, and, and a series of different representations to us, and we do have to get that signed letter before we can issue the actual financial statement audit report. So, so that's, that's pretty much everything that I wanted to go through just from a rundown in terms of those deliverables, but I'm happy to address any sort of questions, comments that any, any of the members have, or Mark, certainly, if you wanted to jump in, feel free as well.
Okay, thank you very much for that report. Are there any other, any other comments from staff on this, Mark or Patrick?
Okay. I would just like to remind council that this was the second year we've used CLA, and before that, we, we had a long-term relationship with the, with a former audit firm, and it's, it's, it's great to have some new eyes actually looking and keeping us on our toes, and, and, you know, we don't, we don't want to mess anything up either, so it's, it's great to have somebody else looking at it for us. And they brought a great team for us, and I want to thank Mark Colvin, too. It's a lot of work to, to pull together all the information you need for your annual audit. So Mark put a lot of hours in on the weekends and, and at night to get this done, and also his, his regular work. So just wanted to pass along those, thanks.
Very good, and always, always good to have a, a clean, a clean report from your auditors. Before we go to questions of council, I will open this up for comments from the public. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this agenda item number six? You may do so now. I'll go to Ms. Scheck. Do we have anyone on the Zoom format with their hand up?
No, Mayor.
Okay, and I will ask if anyone- Okay, and I will ask if anyone's on the telephone that would like to speak on this, you may speak up now. Okay, I don't hear any comments for the public, so I will open this up to questions from council. Because if you have a question, please raise your hand. Looks like we don't have any, any questions. So Ms. Hoppy, may I have a, may I have a motion on this item? Or you're breaking up in the audio. We were not able to, we were not able to hear that, can you try it again?
I moved to accept the 2019 financial. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Commercial. Okay, I move to accept the 2019 financial statements from Clifton Larson Allen.
Second. Yes, we have a motion and a second from Mr. Urban, is there discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, we will go to a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Will the clerk please tally the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much and thank you to our auditors for that. Mr. Colvin, thank you very much for joining us tonight. We will now go to agenda item number seven. Ms. Hutchinson, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 40-2020, a resolution designating the municipal building main entrance as the official public notice posting location and the Jeffco transcript as the official newspaper of general circulation for the city publications in 2020. State statute requires that each municipality annually establish the location for posting public notices as well as the newspaper in which the notices will be published pursuant to the newly enacted House Bill 19-1087. Local government entities are also now allowed to publish notices online for public meetings. This act amended C R S 24-6-4022E or C1, which are meetings at which the adoption of any proposed policy, position, resolution, rule, regulation or formal action occurs or at which majority or quorum of body is in attendance.
Thank you. This is a resolution of the council. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff report on this item?
Mr. Kirkpatrick brought this forward, our city clerk, I'm not sure if he wants to say anything, otherwise I can.
This is pretty simple. The Wheat Ridge transcript, as you all know, has ceased publication under that masthead. It is now called the Jefferson transcript.
Jeffco.
Yep, sorry, Jeffco transcript. We must change formally the newspaper of general circulation in which we will publish our public notices. We also must specifically state where public notices are to be posted. Because of the COVID-19 pandemic, we have stopped posting them indoors at City Hall in the clerk's office and have located a public notice bulletin board outdoors near the west entrance for the public to the municipal building. Again, this is an effort to make a formal motion to change where those notices will be posted for public consumption. In my opinion, this is pro forma procedural, we need to do it to make it official. It should have little or no impact on anyone.
Thank you. Before I go to council with questions, I will open this up to the public. If there's any member of the public who would like to speak on this agenda item number seven, you may do so now. Ms. Scheck, do we have anyone with their hand up in the Zoom format?
We do not, Mayor.
Thank you. If, if there's anyone on the telephone or any other device in the public that would like to speak on this item, you may do so now. Please speak for, speak up and I will recognize you. Okay, I will close our public comment on this item and open this up for questions from, from council. If you have a question, please raise your hand. Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is regarding section two where it indicates that circumstances may exist where publication would be ineffective or otherwise undesirable. And who would make those determinations?
I don't have an answer to that question, perhaps Mr. Dahl does. Mr. Dahl, are you looking at your?
Well, it may be that, especially during COVID, there are, there may be limitations on the paper getting out. You know, we're trying to, I think, anticipate unusual circumstances. Inability of the paper to publish as a result of the pandemic, just inability to get the paper out or have it available to their, to the people that they circulated to. I think it's what we would want to make certain that, that there was guidance to the city clerk and others. Just it wasn't for whatever reason possible to get it in the paper. This gives an authority to publish it on the, on the website in order to make certain that the notice actually does go out as opposed to just not happening. I wish I could give you more detail on that, but it's, it's kind of a plan, not even a Plan B, more, more like a Plan C. So you would have to get to it, but at least the clerk then has the authority to do so and, and we can make a record of that notice.
We think back to the time of the flooding in Northern Colorado, six or seven years ago. The roads were out, public transportation wasn't, not available. Without this kind of a provision in an extreme circumstance like that, our hands would be tied in terms of giving notice. We couldn't take any action because we can't give the notice, but we can't help the public because we can't take any action. So situations like that where we would bring this forward. But I, it is real, as Mr. Dahl said, this is really about extraordinary circumstances. I hope that clarifies it.
Thank you.
I guess to follow up on that, when we do publish a notice on the city website, is there some way to define the timestamp or like if we post a notice in a paper, we can show when that was published? Is there an effective way for us to show when a notice has been published on the city website? Or some way to verify that it was published by a certain date or time? Or some way to like a archive.org type thing where we can show that it was captured at a particular moment in time?
There is and we do. As we, we keep a record of when we post these notices. When Robin Eaton posts a notice on the website, he makes a record of what the notice was, the date and time it was posted.
Okay, is there any sort of third-party effort in that regard? Or is it just us saying we did it?
I suppose it's just us saying we did it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from, from council before we go to a vote? Okay, seeing none, Ms. Hutchinson, may I have a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve resolution number 40-2020, a resolution designating the municipal building main entrance as the official public notice posting location and the Jeffco transcript as the official newspaper of general circulation for the city publications in 2020.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Mr. Urban, is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we will go to a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand and will a clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes our business portion of our meeting. We will now go to our city managers' matters. Mr. Goff.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just two quick things. Should have a mid-year budget report to council this week. So as I mentioned, the last couple of weeks, our revenues in June were looking really good and sales tax are actually higher than last year. And Mark Colvin just let me know that so far through July, we're not even finished with July, sales tax numbers are at least equal to last year at this time too. So things are headed in the right direction for now at least. Unfortunately, as we all know also, that COVID cases are increasing in Jefferson County and Colorado. You may have seen that the Jefferson County Public Health Department put out some information about their variants that they did receive from the Colorado Health Department that they're basically under probation, they, they reached a breadth of new COVID cases. So they have two, two weeks to put a mitigation plan in place. Otherwise, the county's going to lose their variants. And the variants had to do with group sizes. I think the opening of gyms and fitness centers and brew pubs, distilleries, shopping malls. So we don't want to lose the variants, otherwise we may go backwards on some of those things. So a couple of the things that the county is doing is they did, they did put in a process where any large venue events require a plan to be approved by the Jefferson County Public Health before it goes into a place. And then also they just issued a new mask order or face covering order this last Friday that you must wear a mask or a face covering inside and outside if you cannot practice social distancing at least six feet. So it's, that's more stringent than the state's face covering order. So that's the two mitigation factors they put in place right now. So they're hoping to decrease our local COVID cases here in the county over the next two weeks so that we don't lose our variants. So and then that being said with, you know, as I said, revenues are looking good so far in June and July, but if we have to go backwards anymore, unfortunately, we may go backwards in our revenues too. So we all, we don't want to see that, so thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. City attorneys' matters, Mr. Dahl.
Nothing other than to say I appreciate being able to work with the city clerk's office on the ever-evolving set of rules for, for various businesses and in particular liquor licensed establishments. The governor's been issuing orders on that and then clarifications. Orders, I won't bother you with the details of that, but city clerk's office, Steve and Robin Eaton have been on top of that. And we have to continue to get that word out, of course, to the various liquor licensees because that affects, you know, their business operations. And we try to make that as prompt as possible as the orders continue to kind of change and evolve. But we are doing that and I appreciate Robin and Steve's help in publishing that. Other than that, I have nothing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dahl. We'll go to our clerk, Mr. Kirkpatrick.
The, the new regulations at the state level have caused some confusion, which is the reason why we issued, we're going to be publishing information for bar owners, restaurants and liquor stores about when they can open, when they can close, et cetera. The major misunderstanding, in case anyone asks you, had to do with whether or not liquor stores must close at 10:00 P. M. They do not, they simply have to stop selling liquor at 10:00 P. M. So if they have other items for sale, such as a convenience store, they can remain open and sell those items. The second confusion was around restaurants. Can they continue to serve alcohol or non-alcoholic beverages and food after 10:00 P. M.? And the answer is yes. There is some confusion about, you know, could Mayor Starker go into a restaurant at 10 minutes to 10 and order 15 Coors Lights? And sit there until four in the morning drinking or two in the morning when the place closes? That's already covered by the regulations. So it simply moves the last call hour up to 10:00 P. M. So if anyone asks you any questions about that, please let me or Robin know if you're not sure what you're saying. And I would also like to thank Mr. Eaton because he is considered by his peers across the state to be their resident expert on liquor licenses. He used to work for the License Enforcement Authority at the state. And he is an absolute invaluable resource in terms of understanding the liquor laws and the licensing process. And we're very lucky to have his expertise. That notice will be, a written notice is going to 90, all 90 licensees in the city describing what I just told you. So in other words, we're doing what we can do to make sure there's no confusion and people are not jeopardizing their licenses out of misunderstanding of what this public health order says. And of course, restaurants immediately sued the governor to stop it. So stay tuned for further developments.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkpatrick. We have treasurer, Mr. Miller. Mr. Miller, would you like to add anything to say tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would also like to congratulate the financial services team on their unqualified audit opinion they received tonight in the accounting world. That's what you already strive for, so congratulations to them. I'd also like to echo some of the settlements that we've heard from the city manager regarding our budget situation. I know that it seems like things are really great as far as our sales tax numbers and they're at least keeping up with our baselines as compared to last year. However, I still think it's really too soon to celebrate too, too much and start appropriating any more funds towards other activity. We still need to be extremely more conservative. As many of you know, I work for the city of Denver, my day job, and they're looking at budget shortcuts in the area of $200 million. So regionally, the area is still suffering from the impacts of COVID. We have uncertainty with respect to financial markets and so forth. So I still think that I would advise caution moving forward and I'm looking forward to the upcoming budget season and the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. All right, we will go to our counselors and start with Ms. Nosler Beck.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to bring up with the massage parlor. I think it's ordinance that we have. I didn't see in that anywhere where it addresses massage therapists who are operating out of their homes. I just saw the, like, actual businesses. And I think it's fine if it doesn't pertain to homes, but I think we might need to clarify that. So I'll follow up with you, Patrick, with that. And also a special thanks to all of the staff for the audit. It was the first time having to really like look through one, so it made sense to me. So that was good, thanks, thanks for all the hard work there. And I, I wanted to take a moment to also just make sure that we send our condolences to the, to the Stites family. And specifically, I wanted to thank Cory for your strength in all of this. And as a city counselor, you and I were both brought into office and our dads got to sit there as Jefferson High School grads. And they got to rub elbows and, and they both pointed up at that board. And they were so proud to see our names up there together. Your dad was a friend to everybody and he showed people how to be a good neighbor. And man, you, you have all of that in you, Cory. And I've learned so much from you and I know your dad because I know you. And I just, I just wanted to take a moment to recognize that kind of leadership. And your dad, your family, you guys are what makes Wheat Ridge just so special and great. So sending my condolences, but also committing to, to move forward as a great neighbor. Because that's what your dad would want us to do.
Thank you, Ms. Nosler Beck. Thank you, Ms. Nosler Beck. Ms. Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also wanted to extend my condolences to all of the Stites family. I first met Mike Stites. I mean, I, I had known him in my periphery, but I, I first met him when I was running for city clerk in 2011, and he was a huge supporter of mine. And we sat down and had several conversations about Wheat Ridge and politics and the history of Wheat Ridge. And I really enjoyed getting to know him. And I actually, although Cory went to school with my siblings, I had not met Cory until later on at, at a local works event, actually. And Cory and I became fast friends and, and really connected over policy and Wheat Ridge. And not, not many people know this, but Cory and Sarah offered me my first job out of being a stay-at-home mom. And Mike was a great guy, and, and he passed that on to Cory and, and Sarah and, and their children. And the legacy is wonderful in Wheat Ridge. And I just, I'm so thankful for the Stites family in this community. And I just wanted to pass on my sincere apologies for this loss. I know you're a really strong person, because I know the kind of man that your dad was, so sorry about your loss.
Thank you, Ms. Dozeman. Mr. Stites, you're next on the, on the list.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, it's been a rough week, but I, I want to thank you guys and, and thank Patrick and, and the city for, for being really helpful. As, as you guys know, my, my father passed away last Tuesday. I can't remember what it was. It was 2:45 in the morning. It doesn't matter. The city of Wheat Ridge meant the world to my dad and, and my grandfather. But, and, and many of you guys did, too, and many in the community. Whether you agreed or not, most people at some point spent an hour or so at BNF Tire Company, sitting on the couch, you know, having a conversation with one of them, or both of them, or all three of us at some point. And I, I can't tell you how many lessons I've learned from them, just watching them on the dais for thirty-seven years and, and watching them, just the way he handled things and the, the sense of humor that he had. Most of you have ever heard a joke from my dad. It started with a laugh and, and was set up with a laugh. And then he would laugh before he got the punchline out, and then he would laugh so hard that whether the joke was good or not, and usually it was terrible, you would crack up laughing, too. So I, I, I love my dad, and he was my hero, and I'm going to miss him, and I appreciate you guys, and I appreciate Wheat Ridge. One of the reasons I'm here. So, thank you. We're having services, again, thank you to the city, at, at Stites Park on the eighth at 10:00 AM. So we'd love to see everybody there, obviously, mask, social distancing, all that stuff. And if you have some memories, we'd love to hear it. So, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stites.
Wait, one more thing, Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Yes.
I also want to thank the community that have reached out and, and sent condolences, sent cards, friends who have brought food, neighbors. Mr. Urban stopped by with Pietrus the other night. I really appreciate that as well. And that shows what kind of a city we live in and the type of people that live here. This is a community, and when things get hard, and things have been hard for a lot of us for a few months now, we come together. So that's what it's about. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stites. Ms. Weaver?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Urban? Mr. Urban, are you, we may have lost connection.
He's frozen.
Okay. I'll come back to you, Mr. Urban, if you find, if you can get back on, on the call. We'll go to Ms. Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mayor. I also would just like to extend my condolences to Cory and to his family. And very sad time, but he was a great guy. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate no one else saying this. I will honor Mike Stites by saying, if you can find it, buy it in Wheat Ridge. He used to, he, he used to end every single council meeting by saying that, and I think we need to do more of that to honor his legacy and to encourage people to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. And that's something that I always remember from his time on the dais, as well as the time that I spent on the couch over at BNF Tire. You know, going there was kind of a way to find out what was going on in the city, and it was a unique experience. And I appreciate the time that he spent with me and teaching me about the city of Wheat Ridge. And we'll always remember the, the impact he had on the city and thankful for his service to the residents of Wheat Ridge. That's it.
And also, cut your weeds. Cut your weeds. He also said that.
Well, you stole my thunder. We'll go to Ms. Hoppy.
Well, I was going to say that Zach said, find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. That's what I remember Mike always saying at the end. I do have, I want to send my condolences to the Stites family. And, you know, I, I really enjoyed working with Mike and the Wheat Ridge Business District Board when he was there and working with him when he was on council before I was on council. So I really enjoyed that time. I also have a few things, if my internet will hold up. The Cultural Commission for District Four has two openings. So if anyone would like to apply for the Cultural Commission, they're looking for two people in District Four. Then I would also like to let you know that the Jefferson County Treasurer has asked me to remind you that they are extending waiving late interest fees through August 31st. It was originally July 31st, and they're taking payments. So if you have not been able to pay your property taxes yet, get ahold of them, and they'll be able to work with you. And they're, they're waiving the late and interest fees. Another thing I wanted to mention is that Councilmember Stites and I have, had requested for, to review notice, public notice procedures and policies. And those, that will be happening, Mr. Johnstone had mentioned that, that'll be happening on Monday, the third. And we will also, an important meeting, Monday, the third, August third, we're doing a zoning 101. So if anybody out there has any questions about what is a PRD, OTP, R3, R2, R2A, A1, those questions will be answered on August 3rd. It's a, it's a extremely informative and, I think, important meeting when we're looking at, when we're looking at things like, why, why does something have to be rezoned? Or why does that seem like the, the right fit? Or why does council think that's the right fit? These are, these are things that, that we look at, and so I think it'd be some good information. So, and I was going to say, cut your weeds, but the mayor got, but Patrick Goff got one, that one for me, too. I will just say, Mike Stites, thank you very much for all your leadership.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppy. Well, I, I will start by sending our condolences to Cory and the Stites family. Mike Stites was, was a leader in our community. He and I had the pleasure to serve together on council. We didn't always see eye to eye, but we were always respectful for one another. And he was, he was always, always gracious with me, and I appreciate that, and he will be missed in our community. And, and he was a great guy, a real, a real Wheat Ridge leader. I'd like to thank the, the, the people who joined us at our meeting today. Ms. Shek, thank you very much for your unfailing help in, in helping us produce this meeting. I noticed that we have Chief Murtha on the phone. Chief, we always appreciate you joining us. Whether you have an opportunity or, or need to speak up, you're always welcome to be here and, and speak if you would like, and give your best to our department. Miss, others, other staff members, Ms. Tazneem and Ms. Stevens, thank you. Mr. Coleman, thank you for a very clean audit. We appreciate all your hard work. Allison Slyth, thank you for producing an audit for us and working with our staff and give us a clean audit. And as always, thank you to the members of the public who join us at these meetings. We, we sit here in order to serve you and to try to make our city work in the best way we can. And right now, we're, we're in the, in the depths of a pandemic. I hope everyone will take, take it to heart that we need to do everything we can in order to keep our, our people safe, keep our community safe, keep them, keep them from getting this, this virus that's out there. Who knows where it is? The only way to make yourself safe is to stay apart from other people, unfortunately. There will be a time when we'll be able to gather together, but this is not the time. Please practice social distancing. Please wash your hands, and please put those masks on. We, we appreciate that in our community, and it, and when we see everybody working together to do it, it makes it a lot easier, and we know we're headed in the right direction. So please do that. Remind your neighbors and your friends to, to join us all together. So if there's no business before the council, we will stand adjourned. Thank you, and we will see everyone next week at our study session. Good night.